Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, the first order of business is to approve minutes for our September 28th for the Customs Workshop. Have you all had a chance to review?
Yes.
They have a motion to approve these minutes?
So.
Thank you, Steve, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions, edits, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next thing, I would like a motion to open the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant. Actually, CDBG, not CD. CDBG, not the other way around. So it is the Community Development Block Grant. My bad. That is okay. Nupurka, thank you for the motioning to open the public hearing. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Kim. All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to share any ideas they may have regarding an application to the county for a community development block grant. Yeah, that's on. Is there anyone here who would like to make a comment?
Do you want me to explain the eligibility before?
Let me do that.
Okay.
What I would like to do, we did get one. Thank you. We did get one email with a suggestion and it was related to the it was related to the Red Hook Post Office. It was related to the the accessibility of the Red Hook Post Office. And and one of the things that's true about the Red Hook Post Office is there's no there is no handicap parking space identified for the Red Hook Post Office. And what it turns out is because that's a state road, it's on Route 9, the DOT is required to approve that. And I have submitted a request for that to create a handicap spot for the the post office, which is a simple item, hopefully. Frankly, a little surprised it hasn't happened before. So that is in process. And so I thank, I thank the KLAN for sending me that suggestion. And I think we will be able to do that without doing a CDBG block grant specifically for that project. But with that, Amy, so Amy Smith is here. It would be wonderful if you would explain what the criteria is for a CDBG grant and then we have developed an idea as a.
Am I allowed to share my screen?
Yes, of course. Hold on, let me make you host.
This is the actual eligibility requirements for so a community development block grant is in fact federal money that is distributed slash overseen by the state. And as such, it is HUD money, so the Housing and Urban Department of Housing and Urban Development. And therefore, it needs to meet eligibility criteria as determined by HUD. So you can read, obviously, but you have to meet both A and B. So you need to either be buying property, be doing improvements to public facilities that already exist, doing something with housing, removing architectural barriers, or economic development assistance, which is job creation. It's not enough to just do one of those. You also need to be sure that you are needing the low to moderate income resident benefit. So what you are proposing needs to significantly benefit or primarily benefit low to moderate income residents. That is either defined by the maps that are accompanied here. You, I could show you, but you can also, I think, readily believe that in general, the Village of Red Hook is not on those maps. I mean, it's on the map, but it's not in a predetermined area. You do an income survey, so that's the third one, or what, what we are actually going to do. So there are categories that HUD presumes are low moderate income folks. Abuse children, victims of domestic violence, the elderly, disabled adults, homeless people, illiterate adults, persons living with AIDS, migrant front workers. There's a few other sort of subcategories. So and then you have to meet a priority from the consolidated plan. So those are the qualifications. The project that now I'm going to share different that we have been working on. We've been calling rethinking municipal public areas. So you'll note this map, oh, sugar pops, I didn't choose the right one because it's showing you. I chose the ones you could all look at yourselves.
Oh, yeah?
No, it's, it's a, it's an option. I just chose the wrong one. Now I can see you, but you, you're only seeing you one. Anyway, that's not my computer. Can you move? It's yours. Can you move the?
A nobody else, sorry.
So the area designated there in orange to orient you on that building at the lower portion of the orange, that's Village Hall. And that's Prince Street in between Route 9 running diagonally, but more vertically. So what we're looking at is this area of property that is owned by the Village of Red Hook. So the sidewalks and further inward from Village Hall and Municipal Lot. There we go. Okay. So to put it in context, we in, and when I say we, this is something that the mayor, I'm, I'm here in, in my capacity as a grant writer. So we is the mayor and the deputy mayor and myself have been sort of working out this. So across the top, you'll see Village Hall, formerly known as a bank, all the way there on the left.
Or some national sign.
Yes, all the way there on the left at the top. That's a picture from before 1944. Don't know how much. And then when it was first Village Hall and then in roughly 2004, before we have the plantings in the front. Across the middle is currently, and then across the bottom is what used to be where we currently have the plantings at the Chamber of Commerce kiosk, information kiosk. So it's a, there's a 19th, late 19th century, early 20th, and then roughly mid, early. Yeah, 50s, the one it was the Empire Supermarket.
And even on the bottom, middle photo, you can see Village Hall.
Yes, you can see Village Hall here. So you can see, well, you can see a little bit of it there too, but see there? That would be Village Hall. And if you look, we cut down the trees in the inner meaning of time there, but sneak you back in there. It's.
So what's the timeframe of these ones down the bottom?
Late 19th century, where it says Hobbs Building. And then where it says Bud's Restaurant. That's early 20th, based on the type of vehicle that I can see. And then the Empire Supermarket is from the 1954. Yeah. So that's sort of a historical context of the ways in which those spaces are used. So the category under which we would be applying with this idea is the improvements to existing public facilities. And the, the other side eligibility is the populations that HUD presumes are low to moderate income. So this highlights some of the places where we can improve accessibility. Accessibility, just to like keep it framed very broadly, is not just about a wheelchair. Accessibility is about safety for everyone who uses a space, regardless of whether or not they need aid to get around. So there is, you know, one element we need to fix is this sunken ramp goes from where the accessible parking is across the street to the back entrance. We also have, these pathways are narrow and the stairs, which are not original, as we learned looking at those pictures, are very steep and also eroded. They are a type of stone that the dripping of the water is causing them to be very uneven. The bus stop, we have no ramp there. But worse than that, we have the cable and the tree blocking it and the sidewalk is very narrow there. So if people are standing waiting, it is difficult for others to pass. There are many curbs built into the information kiosk area. The parking spot there, this, now we are talking about people who use walkers or wheelchairs. 90-degree angles are not friendly. And we are expecting people to make a couple 90-degree turns in order to, to get across. So these are some of the focus points. When we are rethinking this space as almost like the municipal campus, one of the things that we want to add when widening pathways are elements that will make it psychologically feel more welcoming. And so we are looking at where you see that double 90-degree angle corner there. We, it would be replaced by a curving pathway into the lot. And the plantings would also be shifted. When we're thinking, I'm going quickly, you all can ask questions, but. When the information station was built, it's actually really cool. It was sort of a community-built situation. People got their information very differently than we do now. So when it was built in 2003, not as many people, you know, we didn't all have smartphones everywhere. And pamphlets, the brochures, that was still people's, many people's preferred way to get information. Now, what we are finding is that that space is not being as actively used for getting information. And so we are thinking about the ways in which we can offer people information that is very flexible. One of the things that other municipalities have are maps with QR codes that can provide people with information that's very easily updated in a way that a printed brochure is not. It will also be more environmentally friendly since the printed brochures that go outdated have to be documented. There will also be an opportunity to have a community bulletin board for folks who, you know, do not actually use smartphones. So that flyers and so on can be there, as well as a public clock. And so if we are moving away from the interior information station space, one of the thoughts is how can we make that more usable for the public? And the notion is to put in a open, a space that is open, not a closed-in building, that could serve as a meeting point, could serve as a place where people could wait for the bus in a sheltered manner. And, you know, add a couple of other potential uses that would arise over time. The municipal lot is this primary event space for the village, as people know, I think, from not just Hardscrabble Day, but also neighbors nights. And having something like this would make the space much more flexible in terms of how we use it. It would also make it very inviting for people to enter into the space. So where there are curbs now that require people to step up, it would be ramped or sunken. And there's a variety of possible types of structures. None of these are the thing. These are just an array of ways of envisioning a covered, sheltered, yet open space. So this is the full view. And maybe, see if there are questions?
Yeah.
That was supposed to be just a broad, but if people want specific questions.
I don't remember because I.
Okay.
Just to clarify, for the door on Prince Street, currently the automatic door doesn't work.
Yes.
When it last worked.
Yes.
And so that would be part of, part of the project would be to make that work again.
And there would be, I didn't mention this when I was, the accessibility issues, there would be a lift.
That's what I was trying to, I was thinking, wait, I don't remember here.
I didn't say it, yes, sorry, thank you. There would be a lift added to the front. And this benefits, obviously, people who use a wheelchair, also people who use a stroller, walker, or just anyone who feels unsteady on stairs, which is.
And the nice part about doing it in front of the building is that we tend to do community gatherings here in this space. And so it's there then able to come in from Prince Street into this room as opposed to having to come to, to the door on North Prince Street. Any, you guys have any questions?
No, it seems like a good plan. The question I have about the accessibility in the front, and I'm sure that it's been looked at, the space and the geometry probably doesn't allow for any kind of compliant ramps to come in.
It does not. In order to have a compliant ramp, because you can't have tight angles, we would need a much longer distance to make it. What we can do is we're going to take down the stone barriers that mark the things so that there can be an arc so that the ramp can be on that side. Because then it can just go straight to the left and pull up. And then you will, if you're in the lift, you'll press the button when you get to the top and then the door will open and then you would get out of the lift and be able to get in. The angles for that, we will change the direction that the door opens. There's going to be, since in case, you know, there would be some plantings being removed, these ones that were added, but in 2003. But we are looking at adding, well, you can see my cursor. There would be a planting going there. These, this area would all be planted because it will, the entrance will go diagonally from where the ramp into the space. And then the, we assume the intent between, behind the bushes and the trees was to sort of conceal the vehicles in the parking lot. So that will still be there, it'll just be pushed further back. So that in the front, that space is, is more accessible. And then a similar diagonal, but curving will come from the other side. And there is an existing bike rack there, which we will hopefully be able to. We will definitely have a bike rack, we're hoping that that one will be fine. And then potentially put in maybe a chess table or, you know, another sort of place where people could sit and, you know, have their lunch or have coffee or play a game, whatever. So that is generally. We did submit an LOI. Because that's required.
Letter of intent?
Yes, letter of intent. And I sent the, the. I sent the, the plan with a little bit more detail than I just presented to the Dutch County Planning Department. Because there are two potential, whether we were removal of architectural barriers or improvement to existing facilities. The reason it matters is because there are different maximum grant awards for each. And he gave the green light to improvement of public facilities, which means that we would be asking for $200,000.
It's highly probable that we won't be able to get everything envisioned done with $200,000.
But we will.
We'll be able to do a nice portion of that and then have clearly laid out projects for the next grant opportunity. Is there anyone waiting to get in? Anyone in the public who would like to make a comment?
Is the press allowed to ask questions? Am I allowed to ask questions in that capacity?
Sure, why don't you ask a question?
I have one too.
Well, why don't we, why don't we, why don't we love the Village Residence and purpose?
So there's, there's a very small crowd here, so I'm sure you guys can hear me. And I'm Lori Earp, the treasurer. While I like most aspects of this plan, as a person who moved here 20 years ago and when the talk of the town at that time was the renovation to this village building, there were several reasons that were used for justification, which were all very good in terms of why this building needed to be renovated. A very primary reason was handicap accessibility into Village Hall. A lot of money was spent, a lot of design costs were sunk, and we now have a fully accessible Village Hall at a large expense to the people who lived here, which was just recently paid off. I think you need to think long and hard about the fact that there are many people in this village who are emotionally attached to the front of this building, like the front of this building, the way it looks, the aesthetic of it that they are very used to and very invested in. I think that, I hear you about the stairs and perhaps it would be a very good use of grant funding to replace those. But the idea of a lift in front of a building that is already fully handicapped accessible, to me, is a very big mistake aesthetically and emotional ties that people have to this building. And most importantly, it's not solving a problem. They're going after something that is not a problem. And I feel very strongly about that point. And I think I'm asking that that be considered.
Thank you. Just financially speaking, that is a minor, which is not to say that we shouldn't consider. I'm just saying that would be a very small amount of the money.
I'm not talking about from a financial.
I understand that. I'm just, I just want that as context.
Okay.
And I guess also just to clarify, the emotional attachment to the front of the building, is that with the current planters as they are or the building itself? Because if you look at the older photos of the building, it doesn't have the same.
Yeah, people, a lot of people in this village aren't looking at older photos of this building.
Right.
They're attached to how it currently looks for the last many, many years. Coming in here to pay their water bills from this room housed everything and walking up the stairs. And the aesthetic is lovely. I love the narrow pathways. I think the plantings are beautiful. And I think that if you were to get a group of village residents together and talk about seriously altering the front of this building, whether they're in this room right here or not, I think that they would have issues with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just was curious about the financial piece when, Amy, when you described the requirements of the CDBG.
You can, you can ask them a question, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
How, how the village board is getting over that financial hurdle? How does the, how does the grant answer that concern about low incomes, given that we're not low income?
The notion is that it would be, it would be making this whole area more accessible to those who to those who need that access. And it is, it is considered by, within the grant, that that is assumed to be moderate to lower income people who have those issues.
Right.
The second, look at.
So the presumed population.
I can't read that. Okay. I can look it up online, but I just want to make sure I understand the rationale is that the people who are going to use the lift and the various changes that you're proposing are elderly or handicapped or low income?
In need, in need of, yeah.
In need of the services that are going to be answered.
Yeah.
Got it.
And also, if we'd be moving the bus stop as well. Yes, that wasn't mentioned, so that then there's a bus shelter, there's an easier gathering place. It's easier for people to walk by on the, on the sidewalk versus over here. It's, it's, it gets a little crowded when folks are, are waiting for the bus. And there is, we watched people get off the bus yesterday morning. There are wires that are right where there's a pole and wires and that's where they like walk, which is a little bit of cramped space, whereas over there. I will say that I, I do know that the bus stop used to be farther north. But I did speak with the Dutch County Transit Office and they indicated that the bus stop was in front of the Golden Lock and that that led to some backups and congestion, whereas what we're proposing is that it be in front of what is now the info booth and the info center, which I should, should provide enough space and that would be the plan. And that the Dutch County Transit Authority didn't see an issue with us moving the bus stop from straight from Village Hall to just to, to the mall. Okay. Any other questions? Concerns, thoughts?
With moving the bus stop, would there be a loss of parking on, on the street where the bus stop would be relocated to?
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to eliminate the parking right in front. But then there could be parking right in front of Village Hall.
I actually kind of had a question.
Absolutely.
You were mentioning adding more accepting sidewalks to the side of Town Hall in order to accommodate wheelchairs better for the 90-degree turns. I was wondering, logistically, how would that work? Would that cut in, into the existing road and parking spaces that we would have?
No, it'd be, so you know where there's, there's a square planter, kind of a corner? It'd be sort of moving that, that planter to the pathway, the sidewalk would kind of go on the. So instead of the sharp angle that's a rectangle, it would be pushed back and curved. And then it would sort of curve around so that it would be open. And there's one, there's a technically a parking space that's right there, which is basically impossible to get to. It would be likely to park in those spots. So we would take over that spot and turn it into part of the entrance and part of where, where a wheelchair points and have to go around there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for asking.
Yeah. How long is the open period for comment?
So the grant application is due in the end of October. So if we want to apply for a grant this year, I would say that today's our, our opportunity for commentary. The, the, and if we are so inclined as a board to proceed with an application, the, there would be planning that would need to be done prior, prior to, you know, we don't have finished plans, we don't have finished drawings, et cetera. So there would be work to do, an opportunity for further, which would allow us to have more people come and see. Sometimes it's hard to imagine what's, what's being imagined without something visual to share. So there would be opportunity for that.
One of the unique things about this particular grant is that it allows up to 20% of what you're asking to go towards planning. So that would be architectural and engineering is very difficult to get funding for those things. You can get funding through, right? Abstract plans, but actual. Abstract plans, but actual um, professional services consult, that, this, this does allow for that. Which is why what Karen was saying, even if it doesn't cover the full, we would, we would have planning. And specs, so we'll be shovel ready.
Any other comments, thoughts? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, we're back, um, we had a motion from Steve and a second from. Second. Kim to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, the public hearing is closed. Um, so I do, I did prepare a resolution. To authorize the submittal of um, what I refer to as Municipal Area Improvements Project. And it is uh. And if the um, resolution states that uh, village has developed a project to improve access to those who rely on transportation. Anyone who needs ADA compliant access to Village Hall. We read the police department and businesses and the community at large by relocating the current bus stop. Reconfiguring in front of Village Hall, the area around the info center and Prince Street entrance, creating an integrated public space with significant improved accessibility. Referred to as the Municipal Area Improvement Project. Um, and we have held our required public hearing. Um, so what the resolution says is now therefore the exiled village board. The village board, village rego, authorizes the mayor to submit. A Duchess County Community Development Consortium final fiscal year twenty twenty four grant application for up to two hundred thousand dollars for the Municipal Area Improvement Project. Um, the grant um, award doesn't happen until March, March of twenty twenty four.
Two years.
Two years to uh, to use it up. Um, so I'm. I'm keen on um, proceeding, I think we have lots of opportunity, um, still an opportunity to discuss. What makes sense, but also I do think we still have significant opportunity improvements to be made. Um, and I. I guess I'll make a motion to um. Uh, to, well, I probably shouldn't make this motion, may I have a motion, is there a motion to approve this resolution? No move? Thank you, my court, a second?
Second.
Okay, Steve? Um, discussion?
If the, with the resolution stating these items, does that put it in stone, if that's what it, would the end come be cast to me? Like after some of the planning and what conversation is, it end up being something different? Are we sort of moved to?
So, what, what is it that, that you mean that could be changed? Because if you're talking about like individual elements in the way they're designed, but the actual way that we will be able to meet the needs is the ADA compliance. And the low to moderate income presumed, does that make sense?
So, the location is set, like it could only be to the municipal property that is owned right here. There would absolutely have to be um, elements, that some of the ADA elements, absolutely. How the ADA elements exactly can vary.
The final configuration and elements that are incorporated, and as long as it meets the goal of ADA compliant within the footprint.
Also, the other presumed low moderate income um, for around here is the public transportation aspect. So that we are improving the situation for people who rely on public transportation, so that has to also be there.
So, for example, it could end up being sort of reorganizing over here such that there's a bus stop and a bus shelter and then, and more seating. Um, improving the, if, if you've, if you've been here after it rains, um, that ramp which happened about always once. So if you're going through it, you're going through a couple inches of water, um, and the automatic door doesn't work. Um, and so even if we did those things and fixed the stairs in front. We would, we would still end up in the spirit of what we are proposing, so I think the answer is it's.
Yes.
It's, it's not fixing us to exactly.
At minimum in front of Village Hall, we have to fix the sidewalk, the sidewalk um, because of roots and, I don't know. Erosion, like some panels of the concrete have sunk and present, so. That's a nice liability insurance bump for us to.
Yes.
It's fixed, nobody can.
Um, so without a call vote, um, let me, let me do a, do a roll call then, um, Deputy Mayor Carol. Aye. Uh, Trustee Bradley Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Athens Allen.
Aye.
And I'm an aye also. Great, thank you very much, and thank you Amy for all the work you've put into, to get us to this point and uh, and to. And we'll see where, where it goes from here. Um, okay, the next item of business is the water SCADA upgrades, um, the September twentieth, twenty twenty three bid. Uh, I believe that you all have. A letter from Delaware Engineering, so at our workshop, we had approved um, authorizing. Um, awarding the project to the low bidder. And let me just read the letter from our. Um, village engineer, um, Robert Flores. We regret to inform you that we have received an email from General Controls, General Control Systems Inc. Dated October fifth, twenty twenty three, in which uh, they have chosen to forfeit their bid. This decision was made due to their misunderstanding of the project's scope, leading to an incorrect pricing proposal. We have reached out to Avanti Control Systems, the next lowest bidder, and confirm that they are a responsive and qualified bidder. We recommend that the bid be awarded to Avanti Control Systems Inc. for four hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. Um, and I. No, it's just a motion. Um, couple of things just to share, so the bid, um, the bid that we approved. Um, from General Control Systems was about three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, and in doing some further investigation, the engineer indicated that the best we're probably going to keep. So our options are, we can award the bid to the next lowest bidder, or we can reject all the votes and go out to bid again. The reason to go out to bid again would be if, if one thought that one could get lower bids than what your second lowest bidder is. The thought is, um, at this point with some further understanding of what General Control Systems misunderstood, is. That we might get somewhere between five and ten thousand dollars less than what we have here. Um, but that's, but that's, there's always a risk, um, that we wouldn't even get this one. Um, and so it feels as though the value to uh, going back out to bid, which of course extends the time. Um, would not, um, would not be worth the, the extra time it would take to, to go through that process again. Um, so I, in, and again in discussion with the engineer, um, I also would recommend that we um, award to the second. To the next lowest bidder, um. Do you guys have any questions? Thoughts about this, the other thing to understand is that this project has to finish first. And then the next project, which will come up in a minute. Um, the next project related to rehabbing the uh, water tower can't happen until this project is complete. And so that's the downside to um, taking another probably two months to get this um, rebid. Which I don't know that would benefit us significantly.
So when we had reviewed the bids originally, and General Control seemed like a real outlier, and that either. They didn't understand the requirements, which was the case, or there was some other defect with their bid. Um, calling them out, and just for fresh memory, how many bids did we have, including, you know, Avanti?
So we had three bid, three bids total.
The three competitors.
And I would, yes, and I would say um. Sadly, I mean, the original estimate for this work was just, just over two hundred thousand, I think, so um, as with everything, prices are going up. Um, the third bid was five hundred and seventy-ish thousand. We actually have it in the minutes from the last, from our workshop meeting, um, but it's significantly higher. There you go. So I, I would like to make a motion to accept the Water Systems SCADA upgrades project's next lowest bidder. Submitted, next lowest bid submitted by Avanti Control Systems for four hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred. Wait a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Um, one of the, this is the first of a series of projects um, for um, the WEA grant that we received for one point eight million. Um, and we fully expected the numbers to come in higher than this, which we anticipated. And the reason for the um, staggered. Uh, bidding process is so that we can see what the prices are for different things as they come, so that we can make adjustments if needed along the way. So with that. Um, the next item is to authorize. And so this would be fifty six. Uh, to authorize the solicitation of public bids for um, Cherry and Grave Streets uh, water upgrades. This is replacing the mains on Cherry and Grave Street. Um, and this is the third project, um, it is, we do need to have the SCADA upgrades completed. We do not need to have the tank, um, the water tank upgraded. Um, oh, I thought it had to be the other, but wait. Well, anyway, we'll go ahead with this, so this is to, um, this is for us to authorize. Um, the village to go out for bid for this project. Um, the proposal is to have the bids due on December seventh at one P M. Um, and we always have the option not to accept bids. So this is not committing us to this project, but it is giving us the authority to go out and go, and go out for bid. Um, may I have a motion?
Tell them.
Thank you, uh, second?
Second.
Thank you, uh, all, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay. Now, that leads me to, where do I have? There, um. Need to see, we. Yes, that's exactly what I'm looking for, which means I probably got it in somewhere. Um, so we did, um, we did actually open bids today for the water tank rehabilitation. And um, our engineer has confirmed. Um, their recommendation to make an award, um, so there were seven bids. Uh, they ranged from um, three hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred, um, oh, wait. I have to read all of them, okay? Will do, so um, Worldwide Industries Corporation bid three hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred. U S Tank Painting Inc. bid five hundred and seventy-one thousand. Utility Service Company Inc. bid five hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred. Brave Industrial Paint LLC bid six hundred and four thousand three hundred. Camstar of Western New York bid six hundred and thirty-eight thousand. M W Coal Construction bid six hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred. And Atlas Painting and Sheeting Corp. bid seven hundred and ninety-five thousand. Um. And uh, the engineers reviewed the bids and they've contacted the low bidder. During our conversation, they confirmed their bid price and our common understanding of the project's scope of work. Um, and so the engineer recommends that we award. Um, the bid to Worldwide Industries Corp. for three hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred. And I would like to make a motion that we accept that recommendation and um, award this bid to Worldwide Industries Corporation for three hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred. May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Discussion?
Yeah, just, I mean, I, just as a commentary, I find it's interesting that dispersion of the bids, and then when you look at the detailed items. Um, you know, they're just really all over. Just to be interested kind of offline kind of understanding more. You know, I mean, I'm assuming they're all insured and we, you know, the requirements, you know, minimum requirement.
The engineer mentioned to me that this one is more vocal than the others, and one thing that will drive up the cost is if you have non vocal. Companies that have to bring in their employees from elsewhere and that house them, the logic of this is completely.
So that's.
And in a prior life, being on the other side, being the one party in the war to P M, to turn in your bid. Um, it's not unusual, usually if you think about it like a bell curve, usually there's one low, one high, and, and sort of a, a grouping in the middle. Um, so this isn't totally off that. And then the key is for the lowest bidder to make sure that they understood the bidding, that they are clear on the scope. Um, and, and this is where we see the benefit of competition. It's really terrific to have seven bids. Any other um, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you, that's uh. That's exciting, that's um.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, sure.
No, no, I just tried to. Press that voice.
Got you. Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is accepting the annual financial report. Um, you have, this is the report. The year-end financial report that we are required to send to um, the State Controller's Office. Um, it does get posted, um, this information is uh, is available. To the broader public. Um, I have reviewed this twice, Lori um, has, Michelle is the one, Michelle. So Borstie, our controller is the one who put it together, um, and I, I'm very comfortable with, with what, what is here. Does anybody have any questions, or I haven't had enough time to review it, so I don't have any questions. Okay. Um, what we need, what we as a board need to do is to accept it. Um, and I'm going to recommend that we accept this report. Um, and then we can always come back and go through in detail. The hardest part is it doesn't look like our regular um, financial reports, because this is, this is the way the state requires it to be, to be put together. Where is it supposed to, is it, is it easier to view in an online format, or is it? Um, let's see, I'm in the treasurer's booth, wonderful, great. On our voice then. And ultimately, it will be uploaded on, I believe you can get to other municipalities through the State Controller's Office, right, also, as well. Past ones of ours are there, great. So I'm going to make a motion that we accept.
Well, yes, just, just a quick comment uh, to, to you guys, so these reports can absolutely be modified. After they're submitted, so that is stressed by the Controller's Office. They're submitted, they're reviewed, uh, over a course of several months. We get some feedback and possibly some questions, so it is, um, you don't necessarily have to view it as a, as a submitted and done document. It has the ability to be uh, updated, corrected, modified, that kind of thing.
But as of the financials right now, this ties to that, so it would only be kind of a post. Submission adjustment that would change.
Right, I mean, everything there has, is complete and reviewed, but it, you know, depending on, we may get questions that. That have us say, well, maybe this particular expense or something should be reflected in another area, or, you know, modifications to that degree, not. How much were our expenses were, or something like that.
Um, so I think I made a motion to accept this, my court, did you, second? Good, I think uh.
I think you made it up.
Not do it, if that was possible, okay, well, thank you for, for. To be honest, um, any further questions at this time? Thank you, Lori, for that clarification, great, I'm home. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you. Uh, the next item of business, okay, so the next item you don't have in your pocket, um. But I wanted to, at our workshop. We went through and approved leasing a police vehicle. Um, and. Um, and on the now what I'm handing you, the the cover page, if you flip it over, if you flip it over where it doesn't have quite as much writing on it. So the one with all the writing on it is the one that I used last uh at our workshop meeting. And what we had approved was, um, we took, we looked at the twelve thousand miles per year uh for four years. And then um I had an estimate of thirteen thousand five hundred for the fit up. And I divided that by four and said this should be roughly what it would be, and you all approved up to fifty-seven thousand dollars. So in the meantime, we've gotten a fully loaded quote for the um fit up to be incorporated into the lease. So the, on the second page that you have, that is the detailed quote for the fit up, which has come in at fifteen thousand five hundred and seventy dollars, which is, starts off by being a little higher than what um I had used to quote last time. And so we have two, the reason to lease it is it means we don't have to pay for, thus finance upfront the um, the cost of the vehicle. And by incorporating the the fit out, fit up into the lease, we are then paying it slowly over time. The downside to incorporating the vehicle fit up police um fit up into the lease is there's an in uh interest rate that's applied to that. So the difference between the twelve miles per year, four-year lease of eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-two cents a month to the one thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-two cents, which includes the cost of the fit up, that means that over four years, we will pay nineteen thousand, just shy of nineteen thousand one hundred for the uh fit up. So we have a choice. We could choose to pay for the fit up upfront and not finance it over the four years. Or we could choose to incorporate it into um the lease um cost. If you take the twelve hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-two cents times twelve months per year times four years, that is actually just over fifty-nine thousand, and you had approved fifty-seven thousand. Um, so we do have a significant uh fund balance left over from last year. Um, and we had a healthy fund balance before the end of last year. So we could choose to pay for the the fit up upfront, um, or we can choose to incorporate it into the, into the lease.
If we, if we're upfront, that means that it becomes the village's, and if we lease a future vehicle afterwards, we can transfer it over?
It will be ours either way. Uh, so at the end of the four years, it will be ours if we do it as a lease. Uh, so either way, we we will own that project. And be able to use it. I would, I would think that paying it upfront is the way to go, if we have that, we have all funds. I, yeah, I, I think we, I, I would recommend that we um use the fund balance from the surplus from last year to to cover that. Um, but I, I, I don't disagree. I, I'm not sure where interest rates are going to go, but there's a, there's a pretty hefty interest rate that's incorporated in here. So if that's the case, if you, if you all are are okay with that, I guess I would, um, I guess I probably should make a motion to pay for the, what's listed here as emergency vehicle outfit of um the fifteen thousand five seventeen thirteen cents um using fund balance and then leasing the vehicle for four years. And that, that puts us under the fifty-seven that you approved last year. Last month, last meeting. Um, so if I make that motion, uh, who has a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kim. Any further discussion?
Is it for that cost thirteen thousand five hundred or?
No, that's the difference between it's, it's um the second piece of paper that I gave you.
Okay, thank you.
That has the quote with all the important details of what goes into the fit up. And in the meantime, I can certainly ask, have asked Lieutenant Hildenbrand once again, is there to be absolutely everything, because there's something you can cut out of this. He doesn't usually put in um unneeded extras, but I'll certainly ask. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further?
You made the motion first.
I made the motion, yes. Any further discussion or questions?
The other thing is if it gets into a, well, I guess if it gets into a crash, they would replace banknotes, right, the fit up?
We have insurance, so the insurance would, would, that would cover that replacement cost. Any other questions? Uh, I guess I should probably do a roll call. Um, Deputy Mayor?
Aye.
Just to me, Abelson?
Aye.
Just to me, Robert.
Aye.
Mayor says aye. Thank you. That's very helpful. Appreciate the um, and then the other thing that I have that's of course if you want, if you, if you get one of those, you can have. Okay, this next thing is, um, we've spoken before about the line striper. And the, um, and so I have two quotes here. One is um, and this is, this is from Jake, so this is what he's looking for, us from our, our highway superintendent um supervisor. No, it's uh civil services, um, highway supervisor. So this is, this is for line striping. We have paid, um, I think you, uh, Malcor, I think you had that document, somewhere between yeah, or for at least three or four thousand each year to strike lines, which is basically the, the stop uh, the, the, the stop sign lines, um, the parking lot, the crosswalks, um, all of that. So, um, and of course, when we last talked about this, I mean, the thought was that we could cost it about five thousand, of course, it's been six thousand now, but, um, the benefit to purchasing the equipment is that we then have the flexibility to strike a line when we need to. Um, and uh this will certainly last for several years, which within a year, two years max. Um, and the other piece is in our budget, we had budgeted fifteen thousand dollars to do for catch basins, um, which is account five-one-one oh four-five, the general fund budget. And we chose, and that was based on five days of cleaning out the catch basins. We only did three days. We did the majority of the catch basins. So we have five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars left in that line item. Um, so that covers the vast majority of the um cost of the lower quote here for the line laser gas airless line striper. Um, and um, and the remaining amount can come out of street maintenance. Um, so I am recommending that we authorize the purchase of this line striper. And I would like to make a motion to um authorize the purchase of this piece of equipment up to sixty-five hundred dollars.
And can I ask two questions?
Of course you may.
So right now we're spending, I think you said about five thousand dollars a year? And is that for a contractor who provides the labor and all the consumables? And if we purchase this, then it was the highway staff who would be doing it. The, what would be the cost of the paint, you know, per year? So we can kind of figure out like how much is equipment depreciation that you're basically paying the contractor for? How much is?
So to, to clarify, you mentioned labor. I did talk to our highway foreman supervisor about what the process is with the um contractor, and we have, we have our people with the contractor anyways, so we will not save any labor. And while the paint is more expensive than average paint, it would probably be, I believe, somewhere between two, two and five hundred dollars for paint. Five hundred probably is a lot.
So most of the cost is the labor and machine that they're providing? And then what would be an estimated useful life of one of these machines?
I think it depends on how often it's cleaned and painted.
And I, I, I think, I think that um I would feel comfortable saying one should be able to make this machine last for five years. Um, I, I will say that um we are fortunate enough to have a highway supervisor, supervisor who is very good with machines and is able to extend the life of machinery. But uh I, I'm, I'm sure they can get at least four, five years out of this. The, um, just so you know, Mylan has one of these, and they um came and gave a demonstration in the springtime um to see how it worked and, 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 and how it, how it functions. I will say that the other quote that we have from uh Glencoe includes a day and a half of instruction, which at this point, um Jake doesn't think that we need, but it still puts this, um, if you look at that quote, it, it's not all for the same thing. It's the middle line, which is the line laser thirty-four hundred, the single manual gun, and that's the eight thousand four hundred and ninety-six. So even if you take out a thousand dollars for the training, that's still more than what, what the other one costs. But that's my expectation, and um arguably, if we only get two years out of it, it's a bit heavy game. More than broken them.
I think also the idea was that it would be easier to skip as well. We do them whenever rather than kind of fit everything that needs to be done.
We, yeah, and just thinking of additional expenses, I think the only, we also need the um stencils. So there's a stencil for uh handicap spot, like we even have. Um, we'd also need a stencil for the bicycle, bicycle lanes, and I don't think we have that, so we have to purchase that stencil, which is a substantive probably piece of plastic that has the proper cutout. The other interesting thing is it would allow us to, um, for example, when hopefully when the D O T approves the uh handicap spot in front of the um post office. Technically, the D O T should do the um, you know, color the side and make the marks, but that may be something that we can negotiate with them to do it ourselves, um, to make it happen over the bus. And then this gives us the flexibility to do that. So I made a motion. Did we have a second? May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kim. Any further discussions or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, getting, getting closer to you, Laurie. Um, one last thing. Um, the um next meeting is our workshop on October twenty-sixth. Um, as I've mentioned to you, I will be out of town at a workshop, at a seminar conference. Um, and so we have two options. I think we should have a meeting. Um, I think it's working very well to have meetings in between our regular board meetings, um, if nothing else, to make sure that we're approving um invoices in between. Um, so either um we can have a meeting on the twenty-sixth, and Deputy Mayor can um can reside over the meeting, or we can move the meeting to November second. Does anybody have a preference? I know I checked with Charlie, he's not here, said if your one works for him, he'll be back.
Either one works for me.
Well, given that I usually wait to the last minute to be prepared, um, I might suggest the November second meeting. If that's okay. Unless uh, unless the deputy mayor is dying to. No, present over the meeting.
Very happy.
Okay, so um I'm making a motion that we move the October workshop from October twenty-sixth to November second. Um, may I have a second for that?
Second.
Steve, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. And then our next village board meeting is November thirteenth. And with that, that is the end of the regular business that I have. And with that, I, it is time for our wonderful treasurer, Lori Urban, to present. Um, the treasurer's report.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Uh, I am here to present the treasurer's report for dated October tenth, twenty-twenty-three, and I'm sharing with you our account balances as of September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. In the general fund, we have one million five hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-six cents. The water fund has three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and fifty-five cents. Our payroll clearing account has thirty-five thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-five cents. Sewer fund has a hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and six cents. Our hard scrabble account has ten thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-six cents. The village green fund, ten thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-two cents. Health insurance fund, nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and six cents. And our penny cash has fifty-two dollars and ninety-three cents. Now I'll share the reserve checking balances uh for the fire department, seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-seven cents. Police, seventeen thousand, two hundred and four dollars and sixty cents. USDA, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. The highway department, twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. The snow reserve, three thousand, three hundred and five dollars and eighty-two cents. Tower reserve, seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. Unemployment reserve, seven thousand, eighty-one dollars and eighty-four cents. Court reserve, uh, three thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and nine cents, and the office reserve nine hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-three cents. Um, just before we move on, with regard to the reserve checking balances, there was a question last month as to whether or not these numbers reflected the end of the fiscal year transfers that were made into these, into some of these funds, not all of them, but, but some of them. And the answer is yes. These numbers that you're hearing now reflect those transfers from the end of the fiscal year. And then lastly, our expenses for September were general fund, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, thirty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. Water fund, thirty thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. Payroll clearing account, one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eleven cents. And our sewer fund expended five hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-five cents.
Wonderful. Um, I'll take a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
So.
Steve, second?
Second.
Any questions for our treasurer? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Um, and I'm going to take this moment to acknowledge we've got a, um, our treasurer and our controller and I met with um KeyBank. Um, if you note, in our budget, um, and our expenses, we've been receiving um bank fees um as an expense. Last year was about five thousand dollars, if I remember correctly. Uh, so we, we met with um KeyBank to ask questions about what, what can we do about that? And um and I'll just read what our bank person said. I just checked the September analysis statement of the increase in your earnings credit rate to two point four five percent allowed for your uh third quarter service fees of two thousand and six dollars to be covered by the three thousand and fifty-two dollars in earnings credit allowance. You ended up with zero in net fees for the entire quarter, and you were paid one thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars in interest for the month of September. KeyBank also discounted our reports in Key Navigator. Um, so our month of September service fees went down Um, so our month of September service fees went down from seven hundred and eighty-two in August to four hundred and sixty-two in September. So the net net out of that, which is a little confusing, um is that not only we're not paying bank fees, we're not receiving interest. So I would just like to thank our treasurer for um being part of checking in with the bank and saying, what are we doing here? So thank you, um, thank you, KeyBank, for being responsible. We're also, we also met with um M and T, which holds our reserve checking um accounts, and they, um, they have also increased our interest um on those accounts as well, which is all positive things, so thank you. All right, now it's my reports, um, starting with police report and law enforcement. Um, just wanted to give an update on Lexicole. Lieutenant Hildenbrand has been working with Lexicole as planned to review and confirm policies. This process will take somewhere between six and twelve months. The highest impact policies are being reviewed first. At the next meeting, I will have a total number of policies to be reviewed with a chart showing how many are complete. So for example, um Lexicole has a total number of police policies, and there are a number of them that may not uh be relevant to the village. Um, they're just a variety of things that we may not have or just may not be part of our police department. We don't have um police dogs, for example, so anything related to police dogs would not be a relevant policy. So there'll be a total number of policies, policies that aren't relevant to us, and then how many policies have been reviewed. Um, and I'm not sure whether they'll be in review um or, or um approved. Um, but that I'm, I'm working on that chart with Lieutenant Hildenbrand. Um, but he is actively working with his uh counterpart at Lexicole to um uh to keep moving on that process. Um, as a note, um, there are two policies, one on hiring and one on reporting that have been submitted as required to the Division of Criminal Justice Services. Um, and those are uh required for review to be accredited. So that is happily moving forward. Um, the incident reports for the month of September, three hundred and thirty-four incidents, a hundred and seventy of them were in the village of Red Hook, a hundred and twenty-nine in the town of Red Hook, and thirty-five in the village of Tibbely. Uh, there were a hundred and one water tower security checks. Uniform traffic tickets, there were seventy-five. Forty in the village of Red Hook, twenty-one in the town of Red Hook, and fourteen in the village of Tibbely. Uh, parking tickets, there were fifteen in the village of Red Hook, zero in the town of Red Hook, and eight in the village of Tibbely. And then arrests, there were eighteen, one in the village of Red Hook, two in the town of Red Hook, and fifteen in the village of Tibbely. Um, I can uh share with you that the mayor of the village of Tibbely has contacted um, has contacted us and just said how pleased he is with the work of the um village of Red Hook Police Department. And uh he has gotten no complaints from any village resident in Tibbely, and they're very, he's very grateful for that. Regarding the fire department, um, uh just a little update on the fire contract. Um, uh, we met on July twenty-eighth. I have received no further communication from the fire company since that meeting. Um, I have reached out um to set up a follow-up meeting. Um, LoSAP, we have our special election scheduled for October twenty-fourth on the record question of whether or not to increase the LoSAP annual award from five hundred to twelve hundred dollars. Voting will be held at village hall from twelve noon to nine P M. Please do spread the word. Um, we've approved the proposition, you know?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. It's not. We have a special.
Uh, the proposition is not a resolution.
Oh, I just meant that, that voting needs.
It is not a resolution.
We, we will, we can, now, now I would say is the time to, to do that. If for some reason there's something left for us to do, we'll have a, we'll have a special meeting to make sure we did everything we're supposed to. I think we have. Um, I have not yet received the incident reports, so I can't update on that. Um, and then just on related to personnel, um slash payroll, ADP time keep, um, all hourly employees are um are now using both the time keep punch clock as well as physical time cards. We are still using physical time cards for our payroll. We're still working out the kinks on ADP, we're looking close, which is very exciting. Um, Northern Dutchess Alliance Executive Committee, there's been no activity with this committee, and so uh and I, there's been no communication from or by this committee, so I'm no longer going to report on this until such time there is some action. Uh, the sewer project. Um, as I've mentioned a number of times, the substantial completion was achieved on May thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. We are still working on restoration and punch list items. Um, I can say from the last report, there were two items for the electrical contract that was related to the propane tank at the wastewater treatment plant and the roof on the control panel structure. Both of those things have been completed. Um, the electrical contractor has received his notice of final completion with a list of um, it's basically documents um that he's required to um either fill out or return to village, so that is exciting. Um, related to the general contract, which is carver construction. Um, their, a final property restoration punch list is being worked on this week. Um, we do not have an update yet, but um that is um, that is supposed to be happening this week. Um, basically, everything on this list is supposed to be completed this month so that we can tie up all the loose ends and, and done, done, um, and have final, final payments go out shortly. And then find it financing, uh, there's nothing further expended to date than the last meeting. And then we have the library report. I have written out lots of notes, and I don't think I'm going to read all of them. This report will be available on our website. Um, I did attend um the regular library board meeting on September twenty-first, first, uh took place in the library in the board conference room. Um, the deputy mayor and I were both in attendance. Um, the two new board members that we approved at our last meeting were welcomed. That's Marta de Peppa and Leah Manatka, if I pronounced that right. Apologies, Leah, if I didn't. Um, and there were a number of discussions, they talked about committee assignments, they talked about um um onboarding the new uh board members. There were a number of personnel actions that included accepting the resignation of Nadira Ortiz, library clerk, and approving the appointments of Sydney McKay as library clerk, Sonia Lisboa Bochua as library assistant, and Zoe Fontino as a page, all starting nine twenty-five. Um, the HR report was discussed um, and ultimately it was recommended to adopt the report. Um, this was not a report that had been made available in advance, um, and the board did forward, actually, the um library manager did forward a copy directly to me following the meeting. Um, and I have reviewed that report and have a response letter um that basically states that um I don't think that this report actually responded to the questions that, that, that I heard from the community members who came to our board meeting um to share their concern. And so I have expressed that in writing, and I will put that on the record. Um, and um, but this report is, um, the library HR report is available on the library website. If you go to, on their website, if you go to about, Board of Trustees, in the body of the paragraph, there's um a spot that says, uh, board documents here, you need to click on that, and then find your way to twenty-twenty-three, and it will be in the September, um, under the September date. It is embedded in the one packet that is um posted there. Um, I think we should also include it in our, I apologize if I didn't share that with you. Um, but um I think we should have that available also on our, on our website. Um, libraries, uh, so the library is working on fundraising, it is the hundred and twenty-fifth birthday celebration this year, and I would, there's a wonderful tote that people may have seen at Hardscrabble Day. Um, it is the building as a birthday cake. It's marvelous, and I just want to acknowledge that it was created by Jamie Hokesel. Is that how I pronounce her name?
Yes.
Um, and it really is wonderful, and I think Jamie deserves, deserves credit for that, that really fun design. Um, there was a bequest received from Kenneth and Marcella Appell, and this request is unrestricted. Um, and then there was a number of conversations around the budget and finances of the library, um, which is reported on by the treasurer, which is in Houston. Um, the largest liability is the construction loan that they have of three hundred and five thousand dollars, which is slowly being paid down, and staffing is the biggest expense. Uh, the treasurer did note that the library has, and I quote, always underspent our budget. Um, there was a review of the cash flow, average monthly is about forty thousand or just under forty thousand a month, so the projected um, that leads to a annual spend of about four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Four hundred and thirty-three thousand comes from tax income that is collected by the town, through the town and through the school. That leaves a gap of about thirty thousand, um, and that is made up with fundraising and grants. Um, there was a, they have a significant amount of cash in their savings, uh, their checking and savings account, and so there were some recommendations that were uh that were presented by the county um after reviewing the accountant. Um, and one is to double payments on the mortgage or the construction loan, which um their calculations show that would cut off seven years from the payments of that mortgage and save forty-two thousand interest. Uh, the mortgage currently ends in two thousand and thirty-five, uh, this would have it end in twenty-twenty-eight. Um, and the board did agree to this um starting in the winter. Um, they, and then to keep a hundred and thirty-five thousand in operations checking slash savings. Uh, the stabilization reserve, they currently have twenty-four thousand, um, it was recommended to add a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Um, it's a little bit of a confusing statement, apparently the accountant had recommended a full year of operating expenses. Um, since the majority of the funding for the library comes from tax collection, it would seem to be that the only need for cash on hand would be if that funding is late, um, which certainly can happen, um, but it would seem to be that maybe a couple months worth of funding um would be um a logical amount for hanging on to as a reserve. Um, but the board did agree to move a hundred and twenty-five thousand from operations savings account to the stabilization public reserve. Um, it was also suggested to put two hundred and thirty-five thousand into the capital account. There are two big projects coming up, one is to replace the stucco on the outside of the building and redoing the porch, that's the other one. There are partial grants to fund these projects, and these grants are reimbursable, so they need the cash upfront to fund the project. And then when the projects are complete, the board can decide what to do next, and the board approved moving that um two hundred and thirty-five thousand to um the capital account before the end of the year. Uh, there was also a note that um Trish, who is a library assistant, um, her last name was not mentioned, and I couldn't find it on the website, she went from part-time to full-time. She will be going from part-time to full-time in December. Warrants, which we refer to as vouchers, um, but it's basically expenses were presented on the screen and then were approved by the board. Um, the director noted, or the manager noted that um the library hours are being changed back to uh what he referred to as pre-COVID hours, and this was approved by the board, uh, which is ten A M. to seven P M. Monday through Thursday, ten A M. to five P M. on Friday, and eleven A M. to three P M. on Saturday. Um, the manager is looking at attendance for program versus total attendance, since there are so fewer programs this year. Um, the manager mentioned the Great Giveback, um, and, and this year they're partnering with Grace Smith House. Um, and there is certainly more detail that can be found on the, on the library website. The Policy and Fundraising Committee is meeting September twenty-eighth, that's behind us, um, at six P M., and then the next library board meeting is October nineteenth at six thirty P M. Um, I am not going to read my whole letter, um, but I will read one portion. Um, that I'm expressing my disappointment. As noted in several meetings, the stated purpose of this report was to respond to the large number of community members who took the time to come to a library board meeting, a village board meeting, to express their concern over the hiring process for the new library director slash manager. The basis of that concern was the seemingly quick dismissal of consideration from the internal candidate succeeding the departing manager. The basis of the report was interviews with two board members and a review of certain limited documents. There were no interviews with staff, no interviews with any community members, no review of the community comments to the board, no review of minutes, and no review of the internal candidate's qualifications. There are also several inaccurate statements in this report. It appears that the HR consultant did not do their own investigation, instead, they went primarily on the word of the London board members when they spoke. Um, uh, and I'll just end with, it is important to me to put on the record that this report did not address the concerns that were expressed to the board back in March, and it is furthering a false basis for not hiring the internal candidate. I hope that the board will take a moment to own and communicate the true reasons why you, these letters to the board, chose to go in the direction that you did. I do appreciate the efforts the board is making to improve um your processes and procedures. The Red Hook Library is an important part of our community. I write this letter to encourage an honest, open cast actions in order to benefit future actions. And I do believe that the deputy mayor has a lot of achievement to. I'm ready to start this open letter to the public. I'm ready to address the investigation conducted by the public sector HR consultant, Del C, on behalf of the Red Hook Public Library Board of Trustees and the resulting document entitled HR Report from Sharon Public on September twenty-second, twenty-fourth. The direct contrast between my observations made during years of working with library staff and what the report presented means needed fresh methodology of investigation, and therefore the veracity of the report's findings. Specifically, the report's characterization of the internal applicant does not match my direct observations or experience as a library patron from twenty-seventeen to present, a village of Red Hook trustee and liaison to the RHPL, four twenty-one to present, a former RHPL contractor, eleven twenty and two twenty-two, or an RHPL employee, three twenty-two to three twenty-three. I have doubts about whether the report's investigation was thorough enough to verify statements represented in the report's accepted facts. It is my opinion that due diligence has not met and only two individuals were interviewed who, by the nature of their positions as RHPL board members, and their conduct being the subject of this inquiry required that their assertions be verified by sources beyond their test. Respectfully, Mo. Thank you. Um, and I believe that concludes my reports, and now to the mayor, Carol.
Okay, so uh, New York Forward, as of September twenty-ninth, we are waiting for a response and commentary to our application that was submitted to the New York State D O, Department of State offices. Once the official review period is over, we will analyze any feedback provided, and will hopefully have the opportunity to invite the Department of State Revitalization Specialist, Susan Landry, to tour our village in hopes that she'll be able to provide us with insights into ideal projects to develop for your future applications. We are very grateful to all the community members who gave us input during Hardscrabble Day at the village booth. Some of you even won village patches. We really appreciate the ongoing conversation with the public as they tell us what they appreciate about downtown currently and what they hope to see in the future. And one of the people that won a patch was the former deputy mayor. Just great.
Totally drawn it right up.
Red Hook Together, Red Hook Together meets October fifth at noon on Zoom to discuss how, no, it met October fifth at noon on Zoom to discuss how the group itself could address the needs identified in the PD Needs Assessment and web format, and which specific needs attendees would like to commit to exploring. Childcare was identified as a topic for next month's meeting, which will be virtual to encourage local childcare operators to attend. Various attendees offered to invite either local childcare providers and/or representatives from agencies that are in the childcare arena. The Red Hook Town Economic Development Committee, the EDC meets a second and fourth Wednesday of the month at eight forty A M. This month they met on September thirteenth and twenty-seventh. Discussion on the thirteenth focused on if the EDC would invite area farmers and members of the Open Spaces Committee to discuss economic challenges facing the farming community. Discussion of why Red Hook has successful farm stands on operational farms rather than an active weekend farmers' market proved a very interesting discussion. Considerations on if the market could benefit the agricultural community and/or downtown. The conversation on the twenty-seventh again focused on agriculture. The discussion began with the talk of easements preserving agricultural land and how farmer-owned farms were becoming less of a common model in Red Hook. The growing cost of land and in-profit margins are cited as reasons why young farmers leave the industry and/or work underneath the umbrella of larger non-locally owned operations. More comprehensive minutes are available on the committee webpage on the town website. The Village of Red Hook Communications Committee. The Communications Committee meets every first Wednesday of the month at one thirty PM in the Village Hall Conference Room. At the October fourth meeting, we discuss several content updates and eventual organizational changes that will happen to the website, as well as updating formatting and organization of the mayor's newsletter. The Village Events Committee, the Events Committee meets every third Monday of each month at six PM at Village Hall. Despite Saturday's soggy weather, neighbors' nights and Hardscrabble were a success. A huge thank you goes out to the Events Committee, its Chair Amy Smith for her tireless commitment to our community, Jeff Walsh heading up with music subgroup, the mayor for consummate commitment to coordinating all village operations needed to support an event like this, Dan Fuji for coordinating the local side of our beer tent, Nora Feldhues for running our social media updates, and Jamie Holtzle for helping with multiple design projects right down to the wire. We also appreciate the many other people who helped volunteer on the day up, as well as the countless community organizations and community members that showed up and out of Red Hook in wet weather during the days with sippings. Don't forget that the annual Village Halloween Parade is on Saturday, October twenty-eighth, eight at one PM. All ages of participants and human power flows are welcome. There is no age limit to attend. Also, if you're interested in joining or volunteering for the Events Committee, please contact the committee chair, Amy Smith, by email at events@redhooknyvillage.org. Village of Red Hook Human Relations Committee. The Human Relations Committee meets every first Thursday of the month at seven PM in the Village Hall Conference Room. This month's meeting has been moved to October eleventh, seven PM. The committee presented their Inside Out We Are Neighbors exhibit on Neighbor's Night and again during Hardscrabble Day. At next week's meeting, we look forward to uploading the photos of installation at the Global Inside Out Project website and discussing our next projects. Village of Red Hook Highway Department.
Can I, I just want to stop you right there, just for a moment, and just say that We Are Neighbors exhibit was most exceptional. It really was, when those posters came in and they were on the conference room table, it was, um, but when they were displayed and put up, it really added an incredible flavor, so I just want to put an extra point on how special that was, and thank you to the Human Relations Committee for tuning in.
The Village of Red Hook Highway Department, Brush Pickup. Pickup of brush and yard debris is scheduled for the first full week of every month, pending weather conditions and scheduling. The last pickup of the year is scheduled for the first week of November. Please be patient as it takes more than one day to get all the way around the village. Residents are reminded to place lawn debris and brush in separate piles and tree branches no longer than six inches in diameter. Brush that includes tree trunks, stumps, garbage, or construction materials will not be picked up. And leaf pickup is now underway and will continue until the first snowstorm. Please pile leaves in a row at the street edge. Please remember that the highway truck cannot pick up leaf piles mixed with other debris due to possible equipment damage. We did not receive.
I just, uh, and again, sorry to interrupt, but, um, when the leaves are being picked up by our new truck, and, um, feel free to wave at those aside because they're having a really fun time picking up leaves, um, as they go by.
I got to sit in that truck during the touch of traffic. It's amazing. There's two different, you can, you can drive along the side.
Yeah, it's great. I think the problem with that is when you have two people on them, I don't know who is in charge of driving, you know?
We did not get any revenue from, uh, the scrap metal program this month. However, I did the math, and it is sixteen years old, the program, starting in September two thousand and seven, which I think is pretty neat because it has yielded a total of fifty thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty-six cents, which is great. Proceeds go to the purchase of tools and equipment for the Village Highway Water Materials Management Departments. And residents and businesses interested in donating scrap metal may contact the Village Highway Department or the Village Clerk's office. And the Highway Department will pick up metal if you, um, if you request it, but you can also prop it off in their dumpster, which is really wonderful. I've been doing that lately. Um, Seasonal Projects, annual paving, due to the paving contractor being unavailable this fall season, paving projects identified as high priority by Highway Foreman, Highway Supervisor, Jay Smith will be slated to be performed in spring. That's the bit for me.
Question, New York Forward.
Yeah, when's the next Red Hook Together meeting? So it is usually the first Thursday, and it is, I believe, so they've been changing the format from being online to offline, but because they want, you know, people that are involved in the, um, in childcare, they are going to try to do it online, and the timing is to be decided, but as soon as I find a board that's. Or do you want to be on the list? I'll ask for you.
Okay, next is, um, Trustee Ryan, who's not here. Um, so unless someone else is here to give his reports, I will do my best. Here, no one take over. Um, I will, starting with, um, Materials Management. So in the month of September, we had a total of one point four four tons of garbage, um, and total recycling was two point five four tons. Uh, tags sold were two thousand six hundred and ten. Cost of the garbage is a hundred and five dollars a ton. Uh, there's fuel that goes on top of that, so total direct costs. Now, it's hard to say. There's a lot of other costs that go into it, but the, these costs that we record, um, a hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-seven cents. Um, the happy number is a zero for contaminated recycling, so thank you to everyone for taking extra care not to contaminate the recycling. And again, just a pitch for the, the Village Garbage Pickup Service. You can get garbage tags, you can put your garbage in a, in your own bin and put it outside on, on very early Monday morning or late Saturday and not Sunday night, and it gets picked up. It's significantly less expensive than the other options that we have out there. All right, uh, the water report. So the water for the month of September, the amount treated was seven million one hundred sixty-six thousand, uh, one hundred gallons, which is an average of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand one hundred gallons per day. Just kind of flat from last month, um, broke the flat. All bacteriological samples for the month were collected and transported to base analytical services at Hoover, and all samples were absent of all the tests for coliform and for E. coli, and all the samples were absent of ghosts. In the month of September, uh, the waste with the water treatment plant used seventy-five gallons of sodium hypochlorite, uh, which is an average of two point four gallons per day. And that's, um, that's the extent of that, um, piece. Um, I will just mention that we have noticed a differential between the amount of water that's treated and the amount of water that we are measuring. And so we have a team that's looking into possibilities as to why that might be. So hopefully we will have, um, we will have something to report at the next meeting on progress committed to that. Um, and I got, and the other, the, um, the VFD project that we approved, I think it was two months ago, this is to replace VFDs, which are variable frequency drives for well thirteen and fourteen, um, and also move where the controls are to be closer to the, um, pump itself. And so that work is in the process. That was, that was originally part of the SCADA upgrade project, but it became urgent because one of the VFDs was no longer functioning, and the other one looked like it was likely to go sooner than we want, so that's why we, um, agreed to do that project, pull it out of the SCADA upgrade project and do it now. Um, so that's, uh, that's ongoing. And, uh, that's what I have for Trustee Ryan, uh, to Trustee Brad and Brad.
Good evening. For the Village Green Committee, the, um, there's been no additional expenses for the community beautification or sugar tree for the month of September twenty twenty-three. And the Village Green Committee met last month as part of the newly established quarterly meeting schedule. There was a discussion about the history of the Village Green Committee, tree beautification and improvement. They also use this meeting for the regular committee for upcoming fall planting, which will, um, I heard today is going to be happening on November fourth due to delivery from the nursery. Additionally, we discussed the grant application and a process for a reimbursement grant, which I found that today we are, we were awarded the full amount, so yay Village Greens, congratulations. Uh, the grant was submitted at the end of the month, and residents and businesses interested in having a tree or trees planted on their adjacent Village Street or New York State Highway right of ways, volunteering for planting days for sponsoring of Village Green Committee Beautification Project, may contact the Chair David Pearson, myself, or Jim Cavanagh, Village Clerk. And our next regularly scheduled meeting will be the second Sunday of December at six PM.
Can I interrupt?
Yes.
Great. Congratulations for getting a meeting date, public.
Yeah, very well. Um, and then the planting, as I said earlier, is going to be on November fourth. For the Sewer Department, uh, we continue to meet regularly to discuss the final steps of the sewer project, and we met on the twenty-ninth to discuss the major plans and to address requests and future requests to connect to the sewer use area. And currently, we are working on edits to the code and ensuring all documentation is up to date and accurate. As a reminder to all residents, whether you are in the sewer use area or not, please be kind to your pipes. Only use the three Ps in the toilet. And while in the kitchen or near other drains, no fast oils or grease, also known as fog, as they cause up the pipes and make the system stressed. What goes down in the drain matters. For our treatment samples that were sent out during the month of August, we sent out six required samples, and they were returned and all came back within normal range and are using, um, both, uh, the Red Hook Commons, which is the old plant, and the new Village of Red Hook, they're using roughly seven thousand and forty-three thousand gallons per day. If you are in the sewer use area and the emergency alarm goes off, please call the Village Sewer Operator at eight four five seven five eight one zero eight one with option eight. Press the silence alarm button only after notifying the sewer operator. Please do not open the box or tamper with any village-owned equipment. And for the, um, Speed Limit Initiative, we've reconnected with the engineer forum, and the next steps are, they are preparing a proposal which will be reviewed by the board. We should have it in hand by our next workshop, and the proposed traffic study will cover at least one to two streets per quadrant focusing on high traffic routes and neighborhoods, and will take consideration from existing studies to inform areas of interest and what would be best for village businesses and residents. Thank you.
Great. That's great. Just also about the engineering firm. Okay, Trustee Evans, all right.
Okay, um, starting off with the Village of Red Hook Building Department. September was a busy month, followed up by August, also busy. There were eight building permits issued, one certificate of occupancy, and one temporary certificate of occupancy issued, uh, one certificate of compliance. There were two municipal searches. There were no stop work orders, orders to remedy or court appearances, and five inspections. There were three complaints, um, five Amherst dogs at large, which was remedied, twenty-five Fisk Street. There was a one property maintenance issue that was remedied, and at seven five three six North Broadway, there was noise from a generator, which was also remedied, and one notice of violation at fifty-two East Market Street for property maintenance in connection with work in progress and stages. Um, in connection with the activity, there was six thousand two hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty-five cents of fees that were collected. Uh, Planning Board actions at the September fourteenth meeting, a site plan for fifty-nine Fisk Street was tabled to October twelfth. A subdivision application for seven four one two South Broadway was also tabled to that October twelfth meeting, and a public hearing will be scheduled at that time. A site plan application for sixty East Market Street also tabled for October twelfth. Um, and a minor subdivision lot line alteration for Town of Red Hook, the property, also tabled to what is shaping up to be a busy meeting on the twelfth, where a public hearing will be scheduled for that. The Planning Board gave approval for the Town of Red Hook to act as lead agency for the minor subdivision lot line operation for the Town of Red Hook, Hookingham Property West. Um, and the ZDA, September twenty-eighth meeting, an area variance for Two Cambridge Drive was tabled to October twenty-sixth, and along the same theme of tabling to following meetings, an area variance for Fort Kent Road was tabled, and a public hearing will be scheduled for that time. Looking at the Public Spaces Initiative, the big event coming up on October twenty-first will be the Fall Pumpkin Event, Pumpkins in the Park. Um, and this is the Pumpkin Decorating in Abraham's Park. That should be a wonderful family-friendly activity. Uh, two preschools have agreed to participate in the event. Um, and this will be, you know, between one and three PM on that date on the twenty-first, and there's a hundred pumpkins that have been procured at a wholesale price from Pasecki Farm. A porta potty has been secured that's EDA accessible in keeping with having, you know, any kind of public event in that location. Uh, flyers have been designed, printed, and distributed, so information is going out to, uh, publicize that, and certainly, if you know folks who, um, who like to attend, especially those with kids, but anyone I think will enjoy the event, uh, spread the word. For the Pollinator Pathway, there's.
Just, did you mention, and I could be losing it, that there are two preschools that are.
Yes, I thought I read that, but I.
I just missed it, sorry.
I, I may have missed reading it, so in any event, make, make sure.
Fun time in the little, yes.
Um, members of the Open Space Initiative are finalizing submissions, um, for a page for the Pollinator Pathway on the Red Hook Village website, and they've received positive feedback in the community center in El Dorfin for the gardens that were established in those locations. Uh, for Abraham's Park, there's meetings that have been ongoing to help with the future vision for the park. And there was an excellent survey that was designed, um, and implemented during Hardscrabble Day to provide community feedback, and I know results are still being, uh, compiled from that, but you know, try and have a copy of that when it's out.
Special kudos to Betsy Brower, who, uh, was a trooper through, through rain and no rain and cold and and then also to you, Steve, for your, uh, being there at tables, whether it was the, um, Abraham's Park project or the Village table, so thank you, um, appreciate those efforts.
And many hands make light work of that stuff. Uh, now with Barn College, um, there's been outreach to get some information on outdoor art installations, which, uh, would be something, you know, for the next year, obviously, and they're also working to document what's needed by the village from artists or others when applying to have installation or using village space. Um, and then for the zoning review, uh, nothing, you know, formal in a report, um, but the mayor and I did have an initial meeting with Nelson Hope and Voorhees, who is the consultant that the village has selected to work, um, on the zoning and for the Red Hook, uh, Village Gate by the Hookingham East Project. And as part of the initial steps, a committee will be formed, uh, with representation from uh, the village, the planning board, and, and the public, and there's an initial uh, gathering of documents for background that's being provided to the consultants to help them, uh, with the work, which will start picking up steam, you know, over the weeks.
Great, thank you. Um, just a couple of things to add. Uh, at our last meeting, we approved, um, the code supplementation, ID for E-code incorporating all of, all of the changes that have been made since, I don't remember when, point ten, maybe not quite that far away, um, incorporating it into the body of what is on E-code. Um, that has been accepted, and, um, they indicated it will be about eight weeks to completion, which takes us to early December. Uh, I'd also like to mention that the Rotary, uh, the Red Hook Rotary is having their Citizen of the Year event this coming. I'd also like to mention that the Rotary of Red, the Red Hood Rotary is having their Citizen of the Year event this coming Saturday night. We actually have tickets available here at village hall and the Citizen of the Year this year is a very unformed of Mayor Grant Kavulche. And I expect that there will be a certain amount of levity that will be, we have. Hopefully in conjunction with the former deputy mayor and not at the expense of. And then the other thing that I want to mention is at our workshop, we talked about. The village parking lot and the parking regulations that go with that. What we have in the code. Is a two hour time limit, which has not been enforced. And so we have talked about a four hour limit during the day. And also with giving the village the authority to tow if necessary and also. Noting that with forty eight hours notice that the lot can be closed. And so that proposal for changing the code will, I, I'm close, but I just wasn't close enough for today, so. Should have that available so that we can set up public hearing. And then also it's time to review our noise ordinance. Our noise ordinance was just determined to be unconstitutional a year ago and it is, it is time to put that into, back into effect. And I will have, I should have a proposal for you at the next meeting to review and discuss. I did recently receive an email about. Gas powered leaf blowers, which is the season. There are other municipalities that have been banning them and I don't know if that's something that we want to consider. But I just want to put that in your heads now so that you can think about it or perhaps look at other communities and what they have done to see if that's something that. We should consider. I think that was about me and Matt. Is there anyone else? The noise ordinance?
Yeah.
Um, not, no, not at the moment, except the village attorney. And again, I don't, we're not. I, I don't think we need to reinvent the, you know, we, we're not the only ones with a noise ordinance. And I think it makes sense to have a noise ordinance that is in conjunction with. And in connection with the town, for example. So I think that's kind of where we start and then we look and see, as we had discussed, I think six, nine months ago. You know, let's, we had looked at it and we were determining whether on the weekends we wanted to let people be noisy until eleven o'clock. I think I was saying that I didn't want to be considered to stay as a village. So, but other than that, I don't recall that we had any issues, but I do think the gas powered. Leaf blowers are something that we should think about. They are allowed. And if they keep going, they, you know, yeah. You know, they can do that for hours at a time, which are how they do. So that's, that's what I had. Anybody else have any general business to discuss, just the in the session? Yes, that's a good question. So. As many folks know, there, there is a tenant for the. Former Keels Equipment property where the planning board approved use of, using the barn for warehousing cannabis products. And. That is all they've been approved for, but there, the expectation is they have applied for. Micro license to sell retail cannabis, which we opted into two years ago. So it is an approved use in the village. They do need to present to the planning board and get their approval prior to opening their business. They are also waiting for approval from the state for their license. Right now they are not licensed. They did offer to do an information session, which I really appreciated because I think there's a lot of. Confusion and misinformation around what the regulations are and what, and what is being proposed. To, to happen. Just as an example, the picture window is not going to be a picture into people purchasing cannabis. That will be, you know, it'll be a nice window, but you won't be seeing any activity. You're also, you, you do not get past the door. There's a security person at the door. If you are not twenty one or older, you do not get past the door. So. There is tight security. There's lots of regulations associated with it. But, so the. Owners of this. Folks in this business, I Q, have proposed to do an information session for the community. And the date just changed actually, so it's currently targeted for Wednesday, October twenty fifth. And I'm just waiting for confirmation from them. They, they do kind of want to hear back from, from the state. But, so we should have a flyer hopefully by the end of the week. Thank you for asking. Any other? General business? I'll take that as none. Public comment? I don't think there's. So no, no public comment. I do not have executive session. This evening, I do need a motion to approve of the vouchers as audited.
Yes.
Thank you. Second? Now, in favor?
Hi.
Hi, great. And that leaves us with one final motion.
Motion to adjourn.
That's it. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much.